...Wednesday, October 3rd, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
I was hoping we could remember Maggie Murray, the young woman from Erie who was killed in the boating accident. Her mom worked with me at the newspaper and it's the death that seems to have affected a lot of people in Erie.
Also, if we could remember in our thoughts, Denny Smith, who was a, really, he was an icon in the Erie community. Great guy, great coach, great person, gonna be missed by a lot of us.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes for the meeting of Wednesday, September 19th, 2018, and bills for payment on September 28th and October 5th, 2018. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
Please state your name and the address and the property that you're wanting to buy.
My name is Linda Norman.
Can you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry. My name is Linda Norman. I stay at 244 West 19th. I'm trying to purchase the property, the, down the street from me.
What's the address?
It's a lot.
It's a lot, okay. What do you want to do with the lot?
I would like to, I'm retired now, so I want to take some of my time and plant some flowers and vegetables and some fruit trees.
Have you been maintaining that lot?
No, I haven't purchased it yet. I mean, I haven't.
Okay, are there any more questions from council?
I guess how far away is that lot from you?
About two doors down.
Two doors down.
Yes, two doors down.
Madam President.
Yes.
Do you remember what, what's your address again? I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
Oh, 244 West 19th.
244 West 19th, okay. So this is on 19th Street, two doors down.
West 19th, about two doors down.
Okay, and you're going to, you said, use it like for a vegetable and flower garden?
Right, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Okay, thank you, we'll be in touch.
One other item, Madam President. When you do grow those vegetables, don't forget about us, okay?
I sure will.
We won't call it any kickback or anything like that, but, thank you, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Oh, hi. My name's Tina Sanders. I have the, the house.
Where's your, where's your address, hon?
236 West 19th. I purchased that house there. And the lot is a yard that's connected to the house with the driveway. I didn't know that it was separate from the house when I bought the house. So I've cleaned up the house, but the lot is like a sore thumb to my property. I wanted to purchase the property to go with my house because it's a yard that goes with my house. The code enforcement came out, I got the, the whole house cleaned, the lot is just still full of debris and everything, but I would like to purchase that. I tried to make a bid on it, but they told me that I couldn't bid on it because someone else had bid on it. I wanted to keep that yard with my house because it's a dri, it's my house, a little of the yard, like this much, then the driveway, then that lot, which is a yard, to have with my house, put my pool up and put my swing setup for my grandchildren. I did not know that it was separate from the house. And if, I would like for you to reconsider giving the lot away so that I could try to purchase it with my house, get it with my house.
What was your address again?
236 West 19th. It's connected to the lot. It's, it was a whole, whole house and whole yard.
So I guess my question is, is this the same lot that the?
She is. I've been trying to get it. Her friend that's with her owned it. She's having her friend purchase it. I don't know why she's doing this, but her, the lady that's sitting with her previously owned it, but she couldn't bid on it, so she had her friend bid on it so that I couldn't get it. I've tried to clean the yard and she keeps appearing on the property telling me that I can't touch any of the stuff that's on there, which is garbage because it belongs to her. I've tried to clean it up, so, I have pictures and things to show, but I left my phone in the car anyway, but, my yard is perfectly clean, speaking of, I've remodeled the inside of the house and everything, but she's, I don't know why she's, she's just trying to purchase this lot just to, I don't know. There's a big dumpster there that I tried to have move, they won't move it because she said she still owns it, Ms. Ollie, but she doesn't own it. She's having her friend purchase it. Why, I don't know. I don't know, but she keeps appearing every day that I go try to clean it up and tell the people, my son, my cousins, to put this stuff back down because it's hers and it's, and it's trash. The code enforcement's been there numerous of times for them to move this debris, but it's, that's been done. And I would like to purchase it and clean it up like I have cleaned the yard that's right there, right there. It's, it's the driveway in the house.
Okay, well, what we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to discuss it with somebody because we can't make that decision.
Mm-hmm.
So, so.
If I would've known it was separate, I would've bought it at the same time, but I did not know until, when I found out, I went down to, to the town attorney office and they sent me somewhere else anyway, and they said I couldn't bid on it because someone else had put a bid on it. Like, I don't understand why you can't bid on it when, when a bid is a bid, like if someone, you should be able to, you know, outdo someone else for the property. I don't, and that's what I thought I had to do, but.
Well, can, can you leave your contact info with our ladies in the office? And we have to do our research to see what's going on, and then we'll get back to you.
Okay.
All right.
I don't know where I should go. Where do I?
Right through that door. Thank you. Are there any more repository sales? Are there any more repository sales? Last call for repository sales. That takes us into citizens to be heard.
On the agenda is Chester Lee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chester Lee is first on the agenda. Is Chester here?
I don't see Chester.
Chester's not here, so, Jim, Jim Canfield?
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. It seems like Monday morning for some reason, I don't know why, but. I'm here because you passed an ordinance 162018, and it has to do with the rental units and how you can go into, landlords can go into a four-year inspection program. I like the ordinance, but I think there might be an oversight in it, maybe something you didn't see. As of right now, I don't know if that's fully in place. There's a lot of misunderstanding with people I talk to. Some say it is, some say it isn't. Maybe you can answer that question for me?
We're not allowed to talk. We're just here to listen, we're not allowed to talk during this.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, one of the things, if, I have some properties, I have a couple of properties in the city of Erie. The land, the inspector comes, BIU inspector comes, he looks at the property. If everything's good, I do that two, two different inspections, and then I go into the four-year program. If I have a major problem, they'll come back and inspect it again and again, I can go into the four-year program. However, if I go, they come and they find a minor problem, like say a smoke detector battery's not working, they can give me a conditional approval, which means I have to go another two-year cycle before I can get into the four-year cycle. That may be confusing if you're not familiar with the ordinance. So what I'm proposing, or what I would like, like to ask, is if the inspector will have to come back a second time for a second inspection. They already, according to everything we've been told, for the fee we pay, the $40 a year, we have two inspections. But if an inspector comes and he finds a minor violation, he won't come back, which means I am stuck with being, getting a conditional approval when I can change it and fix it real quick. Does that make sense? I mean, oh, I'm sorry, I guess I can't ask you questions. But what is done, it's just an oversight, because what happens is, I have some inspectors that will come back, and then I'll fix it immediately, and most of the landlords I know fix it, the problem immediately. And then the inspector will come back and he'll say, okay, you're approved. But there's other inspectors who say, no, I won't come back for a second inspection, which means I, that two-year cycle I have to go repeat because maybe a battery in a smoke detector, or the smoke detector went bad when they came to inspect it. So, I have, just, I know you guys deal with a whole lot of stuff, and I know that when I leave here, maybe half an hour from now you'll go, what was that guy talking about? So I wrote up a little thing, just a proposal, and I actually have one for everybody, but I'll read what, what, what change I think would make the ordinance even better, okay? Because I think there's a lot of people right now who, a lot of landlords, who are under the impression that this program's in place and that if there's any minor things found, the inspector will come back, and that, I'm not finding that to be true. So, I'm requesting the ordinance be amended to require BIU inspectors to complete a second inspection on all, any rental units that are conditionally approved if the owner makes repairs and calls and says, can you come and re-inspect it? A second inspection has to be required, no matter whether it's a minor violation or a serious violation. They will come back for a serious violation, which they should and they have to. But the minor ones, if they don't come back, and on their side, I understand, because you've just doubled their work. They come, they look at it, see a minor thing, they cancel, they say, no, it's not, you're gonna get conditional approval. And then they have to come back again, they should have to come back again. If, if that's the purpose of this ordinance, to make sure the safety of the unit, of the rental unit, then they should have to come back again. And then the four-year program has more motivation for landlords. Any questions?
Madam President, can we just ask, Mr. Canfield, we have your, your address here, but would you be, be able to leave your number and/or an email at the city clerk's office so we could follow up with you? That would be very helpful to me.
I think you could probably, even with, I'm a member of the apartment association, but I'm not here representing them, I'm just a landlord. But seriously, at the different meetings I go to, there's a lot of misunderstanding about how this is gonna work, and the only thing that I see that's wrong, and I think it's because you have to put it in practice to start to see some of the things maybe you need to find too, and that's one of the things. Thank you. Is that my time?
Yes.
I actually got more time than I have. Thank you very much.
You could go right through that door to leave your contact information. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Johnny Campbell, and I live at 1057 West 6th Street. I'm here for a complaint. Last Friday, the 28th, the meter maid came out and she was putting a ticket on my daughter's car because she was blocking my driveway. So I ran out there and asked her why was she doing it, and she said, you can't block the driveway. And I said, this is my daughter's car and this is my house, and this is my driveway. She said, you cannot block a driveway. And I said to her, I never heard of that before. And I said, I live here almost 50 years and I never heard this law saying you can't block your own driveway. I said, I know I can't block any other, anybody else's driveway, but I thought you could block your own driveway. And I said, I have peoples come out working for me, and I let them block my driveway, and sometime I block, I let them have my driveway, I have the material, and then I block my driveway. She said, I said, is that a law? She said, yes. So I called the Parks Department. I said, well, I have to call the mayor's office. And I said, well, she said, go ahead, and I, well, I didn't know the mayor's number. So I called the Parks Department, they said they never heard of that, and then they gave me a number to call, and I called and asked if it was true, and he said, yes. And I said, I never heard of it. And he said, well, you hear it now. So is, I'm asking you, council, is this true? You can't block your own driveway? I've been there for almost 50 years, I never heard this law, this whatever it is. Is it true? I asked, I asked church people Sunday, they said they never heard of it.
You can't block.
And I said to her, please don't give my daughter a ticket. I said, she just got home and she was lying down sleeping. But is this a, is this a, is this the law? You can't park your own driveway? Or is this something they threw in? Tell me.
It is, you can't park, you can't block your own driveway.
Can I block my own driveway?
No. And if you want a copy of the regulations, just stop in the office when you're done and they'll give you.
She said I can block it after 4:00.
No.
Now, do that make sense? I can't block my own driveway. How long this been in effect? I never heard of it. Nobody else had never heard of it I talked to. I never heard of it. Now, when I help peoples out there to do my work on my house, I can't, they can't block my driveway? Oh, that's ridiculous to hear a law like that. That is terrible. That don't even sound right. Now, where am I gotta go to see about that?
You could go right through that doorway and just ask the girls to get a copy of the parking regulations. They'll get that for you.
Okay, I know my time ended up, but I'll leave.
Ma'am, would you, please leave your number, I, I'm the liaison to parking, and I will check on it for you.
Would you please?
Yeah, but leave your number with the clerk in the office.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go right there, through that door. Oh, okay.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. I'm certified orientation and mobility specialist. My first comment will be about parking, Kaz, I think I even emailed you this. Before the new parking system was implemented, I believe that I asked, I don't own a smartphone, I have a flip phone, I don't have any internet capability with this, this iPad that I carry around with me is Wi-Fi generated. I do not have the ability to use the new meter system, I talk to the parking people with my, with my phone. I thought, I asked and I was told that I would be able to get text messages telling me if my meter was expired and I could re-up. Now I'm being told that I have no ability to use this system if I don't have a smartphone. And I believe that the, the information about this new system said that parking fees are being raised in part to support the cost of implementing the new system. That means all of us out there who do not have smartphones are being taxed with the increased fee without the ability to use this system. We should all be able to use this system. And if that's not true, I'd be glad to be advised of that. I believe I've tried to contact Mr. Kwiatowski about this, but haven't received a response. I have been sharing my concerns about construction and pedestrian access for some time. Lately, as I've been traveling, I've noticed that narrow streets in Brooklyn, New York, and in Pittsburgh, they have very, they have taken the ability on a narrow street to provide pedestrian, safe pedestrian access during construction. In Pittsburgh, I took pictures and shared it with all of you of the movable barriers, the, they're expandable, you can connect them with each other, and they fill them with water or sand if they want to keep them from moving around. A good example of a place where there's enough width in the, in the street, they'd have to forego parking, would be on 6th between French and Holland there by the Erie Insurance Construction. This is a long-term project. There is enough room to, you would have to lose the parking, but interestingly, that's free parking there, and it's being dominated by the pickup trucks of the construction workers. Free parking, it's an odd placement for free parking in this town, right by Erie Insurance. But it would be possible to put those kind of movable barriers in there and create a safe sidewalk. Also, on 10th Street where the Velocity Net Project is going on, there's plenty of room to forego some parking in order to provide safe access for pedestrians. I've also sent a number of emails to lots of people about the ongoing curb, curb ramp On 6th and Walnut, I checked yesterday, that's been going on for nearly two weeks, and you have flagging up. Flagging is of no use to a visually impaired pedestrian. People with wheelchairs, you have all four intersection, corners of that intersection unusable at one time. That's not necessary to put all four corners in at the same time. Oh dear, I'm almost out of town. So my other concern is this quality of life ordinance. I think it should be used to cite businesses who do not clear the snowberms that block the sidewalk. I also am concerned that for over four years, there has been an alternative lawn ordinance, and now it's been sitting in Dave Mulvaughill's department for about a year, not reviewed. Without this ordinance, the alternative lawn ordinance, people like me, certified, pollinator-friendly master gardener, gardener, I'm not a master gardener, but they certified it, we should have that alternative lawn ordinance in place. It deserves due process, but it has been sitting either on Sarah Galloway or Dave Mulvaughill's desk for months now. It is not appropriate to, to pass this ordinance without reviewing that, that item. And I am concerned that the alternative, that the quality of life ordinance is gonna be used against people selectively, rather than, I, I want the ability to call you up and say, this business is not clearing their sidewalk. This business is not removing their vegetation. This business is not removing the snow. And that should be part of what this quality of life is about. Thank you.
Freda, can you do me a favor and, and go in the clerk's office and talk to Lori? She has something she want to talk to you about. Tell her I sent you in.
My name is Mary DeTulio, 4356 Miller Avenue. I began my career in nursing at age 11 as a candy striper at Metro Health Center. Then over the years, I functioned as a nurse practitioner, a nurse aide, a registered nurse, and I retired as a certified registered nurse practitioner, practicing medicine in that capacity for over 20 years. For those of you who do not know the difference between a physician and a nurse practitioner, let me explain. Doctors study diseases and how to cure disease, while nurse practitioners study people and how to heal them. Studies show nurse practitioners do about 80 to 90% of what physicians do. Both professions practice the healing arts, but we do so from different perspectives. While some may view my concern regarding the hydrofluoric acid in our water as some sort of conspiracy theory, I can assure you it is absolutely not. I have thoroughly researched the Cochrane Library, PubMed, National Institutes of Health, and several other trusted medical research sites. I did not type into the Google search bar fluoride conspiracy theories. I feel quite certain that the researchers who compiled the data in the 300 research studies I have provided you would be highly insulted to be classified as a conspiracy theorist. Randomized controlled trials are the gold standard for proving whether a drug is truly safe and effective. There has never been a single randomized controlled trial to determine the safety and effectiveness of either fluoridated water or fluoride supplements. I would also like to address the statement made by one council person about claims I was making regarding fluoride and gun violence. All the statements I have made are backed up with medical evidence. The research article, Neurobehavioral Effects of Developmental Toxicity in the Lancet Journal Neurology, clearly states that fluoride is a neurotoxin that causes ADHD. There are 115 supporting medical journal references associated with that research article. The research article, Long-Term Consequences of Childhood ADHD on Criminal Activities in the Journal of Mental Health Policy and Economics, clearly states that those who experience ADHD face an increased likelihood of engaging in criminal activities. There are 34 supporting medical journal references associated with that article. I'm sure most of us can remember something that was once thought to be safe. You hold in your hands an advertisement from earlier years. Dentists recommended Viceroy cigarettes, and we now know that smoking causes cancer. Through research and brave people questioning the narrative, the truth has come out. The time has come to face the truth and immediately stop water fluoridation. Look at how easily they disbanded the EMTA without a court battle. I must also express my comments regarding, about comments made by a council member about how some citizens are exploiting the broken hearts of people who have lost family members. Since I believe those comments were spoken about me, let me be perfectly clear. I was not attempting to exploit anyone's emotions. Quite the contrary, I was being totally empathetic because I lost a brother to gun violence. My brother was murdered on his honeymoon. He had six bullets put in his head. His fingers were cut off so his rings could be stolen, and then his lifeless body was thrown in the dumpster and a filthy mattress was thrown on top of him. It is that horrific experience that has been a force for good in my life. I have helped many people achieve, achieve better health regardless of race, creed, or statute in life. I guess long gone are the days when we would treat people with civility and respect. I believe that mocking people that question their public officials in the status quo and saying it's a rabbit hole conspiracy theory is rather juvenile. I think that a journalist, an elected official that can't look past their own bias and consider documented medical evidence that opposes their personal opinion puts their integrity in question. Thomas Jefferson wrote that the purpose of government is to enable the people of a nation to live in safety and happiness. Government exists for the interests of the governed, not for the governors. Finally, one thing I know is the Councilman Kwiatowski on the taxpayer hotline would be a very tough act to follow because he upholds the First Amendment and treats every citizen that calls in with the respect that they deserve. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam President, Erie City Council, Schenbroer Administration, and fellow Erieites. First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you, Mayor Schenbroer, and the Schenbroer Administration and Erie City Council. The Erie Innovation District says that we have five new companies that are gonna stay in the city of Erie. Okay, Wallet Hub needs to look at that and see that we are moving forward on a positive, upbeat, inclusive level that, I don't understand why we were the 513th slowest city in the nation. We are doing positive, engaging, civic, inclusive measures to better the quality of life and to better the business atmosphere in downtown Erie. We are changing for the better. With that being said, I applaud Mayor Schenbroer for his move on creating the new board of EMTA. That is a positive, bold move. It's a statement saying that the past is the past. It's gone. There is a lot of fear mongering in the city of Erie. There's a lot of fear of, oh, this or that, this and that. Well, that's why we have a democracy. That's why we come here to talk about the issues, the situation. That's why we come here to talk about the issues, the situations that we address. And I applaud Mayor Schenbroe on his accomplishments so far. We are moving the city in a positive and engaging manner. But it was brought to my attention just recently in sitting down with some of my fellow citizens, that the Standing Citizens Advisory Committee that I've been a part of for four years with EMTA is going to be dissolved and inactive. I wish that Mayor Schenbroe and City Council could please ask the EMTA to be more fluent, more transparent with the citizens of Erie to making sure that those who attend those meetings, like myself and other individuals, are aware of what is going on. Because I feel very excluded from the solution. There are Standing Advisory Citizens Committee that meets regularly four to five times a year. That must be a part of this new board. And if any citizen in the city of Erie has an issue or they would like to come to the table, just like we do every two times a month, please come to the Standing Advisory Citizen Committee with EMTA moving forward. That's one thing. Second thing is, is that I'd like to say thank you Kathy Schopf, Erie City Councilwoman Kathy Schopf, on the National Voter Registration Day. We had the Erie Democrat Party, the Erie Libertarian Party, and the Erie Republican Party come together. If we can get political parties together on a day just for voter registration, think about what we can do for the startups, for the small businesses, for the citizens that will love to take care of our hometown and any aspects of developing a startup to developing capital that could make Erie the fastest, upbeat, positive, engaging city in hometown that we call Erie, Pennsylvania. In October is National LGBT History Month and another feather in our cap. Guess what? The Mayor Schenbroe has an LGBT Advisory Council. That is historical in the city of Erie. From the days of whenever I heard from my fellow LGBT members that the LGBT community had to meet in social halls, social clubs, just to meet. Then they went on to Silver Slipper, which is Calamari's now, then they had to go to Lizzie Borden's, and then we got Trance, Crays, The Zone, Paper Moon, Cappuccinos. And now we have all these LGBT-friendly businesses in downtown and across the city that is opening up and being more inclusive, more friendly. That's the Erie I know. That's the Erie that we always hashtag about. And I wish that we could hashtag the positive, engaging, good things that are happening in Erie to show the world to come to Erie. Come live, learn, and thrive. Thank you so much, and remember, November 6th is the general election.
Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, second floor. Just a couple of things I wanted to touch base on. One was the EMTA board moves. My concern is that it took a long time before we finally got an actual rider on the board and now this thing's being clean swept through. I know Julie Minich from different venues and advocacies and it was a positive sign that she was on the board. I don't know why she's being scrubbed off. I did not know about the advocacy, Citizens Advocacy Committee. So that's even more concerning. I think it's a terrible thing to isolate the board from actual rider experiences. So I hope that gets resolved. The other thing I wanted to bring up was to remind you regarding the viaduct, there's an issue that's stuck in the mud right now and that's the National Environmental Policy Act review that needs to be refiled from PennDOT. It started to be talked about last summer, it, summer of 2017. It's been over a year that this issue's been stuck in the mud and there's a fundamental element to it that is a deal breaker for the engineers. And that is simply snow. Now, we talked about that pedestrian path along the Bayfront Highway. Whether the viaduct's there or not, you have to protect that path because it's 2,000 feet long and people have no refuge area. They're exposed. So in the circumstance of inclement weather, you have a situation where people are walking for 2,000 feet and they're having everything thrown on them by the passing vehicles. Now, the real concern is if a plow comes along and it throws wet, heavy snow right into the pedestrians on that walkway. That's just, you can't have that. So the engineers, the same ones that said they could put a sidewalk on the south side of 12th Street and found out they couldn't, they said they'll put a wall up to protect that pathway. Well, right away, we sent up the alarm saying, "A wall is a terrible idea because now you're blocking visibility of anybody on that path and if someone is on that path and in distress, you wouldn't know it." So their answer was, "Okay, then a transparent wall." And we said, "Well, good luck. Show us how that's designed." And that's where it got stuck in the mud. They have no idea how to do that. And one of the big issues that gets missed in all this is that if they put the wall up to protect the pedestrian on the sidewalk, what they're doing is they're putting a barrier up that prevents the plow from removing the snow from the highway. If a plow comes along and tries to plow the highway, it throws the snow into this wall, the wall will kick it back and it will remain on the highway. So you have to choose, does that snow stay on the highway or does that snow get bumped over onto the pedestrian way? It's a fundamental scientific circumstance. So, the only real solution is don't take away the alternative path that gets you out of that problem. Very simple. Give them the other way to go that they don't have to walk in fear that they're going to be nailed by weather or snow when they're exposed on that bayfront path. The bayfront path is a wreck trail. It's not an urban connectivity. That's something that, for some reason, the engineers and planners don't get that. But that's why the NEPA review still mires in the mud and why there's been no resubmital. They have no idea how to solve that, just like they never had a solution for the 12th Street South sidewalk. So, I wanted to advise you of that because we are starting to have professionals in City Hall now that have the expertise to address these kinds of issues. They haven't engaged anything in the viaduct, which is very disappointing because that's why they're there, to do things for issues like this. But we're building towards being able to resolve these things. And I'd like us to pay more attention to actually getting involved and solving these things now that we have the personnel coming into play. So, that's my hope and my request, and thank you for letting me share that with you.
I am Julie Minich, 1027 West 37th Street. I'd just like to address Adam's question. The reason why I resigned from the EMTA board was because I was asked, if you've ever, my policy about resigning was if Kathy Dahlkepper wanted me to resign, I would resign. That was always my policy. I've said that many times in all of the board of Erie meetings. It was not a political thing. I did what I always said I would do. So I just wanted to address that. I was very proud to be a rider on the board. And I want it noted that there is a rider that is coming on the board today. Jessica Maltzand is a lift rider and, to my knowledge, there has never been a lift rider on the board. And as a former member of the board, I think it's very necessary because we dealt with the lift. And I, as a rider myself, never even had any idea the struggles and the payment plan and everything like that. So I think it's a wonderful thing that Jessica is being nominated to the board. The reason I'm here is because I heard this, that they may table the vote for the appointments for the mayor. I've always supported, I've been in front of you many times, saying that Mayor Schenbroe should have his own appointments. If you remember, the city appointments were from the last administration. To me, it didn't seem fair that the last administration would have appointments into the full term of the new incoming mayor who's been in for a year. And I'm speaking to you as a rider and I have to say that with no board, there is a lot of uncertainty among riders. The bad press hasn't helped the EMTA. I love EMTA. I use it. I've used it before I was a board member, before I was an advocate. I always use the system and I think it's a wonderful system. I'm a choice rider, which means I have a car, but when I bought a house, I bought a house on a bus line so I could come downtown, come to meetings like this and not worry about a parking ticket. And I think there are many other people who would be like me, but all this bad press has kind of discouraged ridership. If you remember back in the charter debate a few years ago, that significantly decreased ridership. Now, it did it because it was in the press and there was a lot of fear. But to be honest, once you lose a rider, you've almost lost them for life. They buy a car, they get another apartment, things that are not conducive to bus lines. And so we have to think of how do we keep, not only people who ride the bus because they don't have a car, but people like me who choose to ride the bus. I also would like to thank the Schenbroe Administration because as far as I know, the appointments have been very public. There was a call from the community and it was all open. So I appreciate that. And I urge you to accept the appointments. This process has been going on since September. We had the big board blow up in August and it was decided in September that we would get new, that we, the city and county, I'm not speaking for them, I'm just mixing up my pronouns, but anyway, they decided to get a new board. I personally think that a new board is needed. I knew, no. I think that some of the old board members were on there since Solinsky was there and Solinsky has been two executive directors ago. I think it's great that we have a new board. Hopefully, they get along. One can always hope. So I urge you to vote on this and accept this. And again, I'm, as far as the rider concerned, Jessica Maltzand is a wonderful advocate and rider and she will give a new perspective to the EMT board. I can guarantee that. Thank you for your time.
My name is Sydney Zimmerman. I live at 413 West 9th Street, second apartment. To piggyback on Mary's fluoride point, I do want to read this. It is a study and it was done by the NCBI, which is a branch of the National Institution for Health, which is a government organization. And it says, the authors, this is part of the abstract, "The authors conclude that available evidence suggests that fluoride has a potential to cause major adverse human health problems while having only a modest dental carries prevention effect. As part of efforts to reduce hazardous fluoride ingestion, the practice of artificial water fluoridation should be reconsidered globally while industrial safety measures need to be tightened in order to reduce unethical discharge of fluoride compounds into the environment. Public health approaches for global dental carries reduction that do not involve systematic ingestion of fluoride are urgently needed." So, there you have it from the government themselves. But in regard to the first point that was brought up about code enforcement, officers not having to come back to make sure that corrections are made, as a tenant myself, I think that that is improper. When I first moved into my apartment about two years ago, I was told that code enforcement told my landlord and property manager that they had to put a second lock on my upper door because I have two doors to get into my house. I live on the second floor. That lock has never been fixed. And I would guess that's because code enforcement doesn't have to come back and make sure that that correction was made. And just to add, in his correction to the ordinance, he states that BIU should have to come back. From my understanding, there are two different code enforcement teams. There's the Erie code enforcement that is like from Erie and then there's BIU and they both do code enforcement work. So if that change was made, it would need to include both the Erie team and the BIU I've been up here speaking on behalf of Erie County United before. We've come forward about a community benefits agreement. When we were at a study session for that community benefits agreement, we were told by council that we need to set up a sit-down with community developers to introduce the idea of CBAs to them. We have sent out a letter. We are hoping to have this meeting happen on October 23rd. I'm not sure if you guys have been contacted about that, but I'm making you guys aware now. If you'd like any more information about it, please feel free to contact me. My email is sydney, S-Y-D-N-E-Y, at propels, P-R-O-P-E-L-S dot info, I-N-F-O. Or if you have Kate Cooley's information, feel free to get ahold of her. To piggyback off of the viaduct, I would just like to remind people that cars are parked underneath the viaduct. If it is not safe for people to walk on the viaduct, why are cars underneath it? Why is that okay? Why is that safe? And in regard to snow and quality of life and the viaduct, it brings it full circle to the fact that winter is coming. We have schoolchildren that do not have buses to get to school. They are young. A lot of them walk alone. Just the other day, I was driving while at work and I was on parade between 12:00 and 6:00. I know that's a bit of a range, but I watched young kids almost run out into the street and have to be pulled back in. This isn't anything new. We know that children don't do well near streets by themselves. Snow is coming. If there aren't sidewalks for kids to walk on, they are most definitely going to be in the street. Snow is high, kids are short, difficult to see them. If we're not going to provide busing for our students, we need to make sure the sidewalks are cleared and we need to make sure they have paths to walk on. Little bit of common sense, but it doesn't seem so obvious to everybody. And I don't mean to be talked down on people, I'm just concerned. And that is coming through in my tone and my words. If there is an advising committee for community members for the EMTA, I would hope that it's not being dismantled for the exact reason that riders should be included in the decisions of the EMTA and if they can't be on the board, then I think that it is fair to say that they should have another outlet to be able to voice concerns. Myself, I've had to use the EMTA writing and it's not reliable time-wise, so I think that people who use it should have a good say in it. Thank you for your time, guys.
Good morning, councilmen and women. I'm Martha Wachuku, 711 Myrtle Street Apartment 2. I don't think I've celebrated yet any of the other times I've come up here, the fact that we have modernized our parking situation, so I'd like to thank you guys for that. As well as yesterday on Facebook, I noticed that the city has started putting up public meetings on the Facebook page, so I think, I hope that will encourage people to come and get involved in the process, so I'd like to celebrate that as well. But as Sydney said, and as you know, I'm a community organizer for Erie County United and last month, we had a study session on community benefit agreements and we were implored to contact some of the local stakeholders and were implored to, um, contact some of the local stakeholders, um, in Erie to come to the table and talk about this issue, so we have. We've sent out a letter, I'm calling them, I'm showing up. Um, I'm trying my part to, um, make sure they come here or meet with us. This, um, roundtable is going to be happening again on October 23rd at the Blasco Library, and also the public is welcome. It's going to be in room 219 at 6:00 PM. I have here with me letters that, um, Elspeth or Kate Kaylee has written up, and I'm going to take a little time to read it to you and then hand it to you so you know about the event, and hopefully you can come, and hopefully you can bring some of your other stakeholder partners or people you have relationships to the table. "To Who Would May Concern? The members of the Erie CBA Coalition would like to invite you to a roundtable discussion with city council and other regional stakeholders on October 23rd at the Blasco Library in room 219 at 6:00 PM. We will be discussing how other cities are moving forward with equitable development and how Erie can model itself towards equity. When community benefit agreements, CBAs, are implemented, not only do taxpayers receive a return on their investment and get to participate in community revitalization efforts, but developers gain a positive reputation in the communities they reside within. Erie has been listed as the worst city to live in for African-Americans, and downtown Erie Zip Code 16502 is the most impoverished of all Pennsylvania. In light of this, we as a community need to make a concerted policy effort to affect our city's longstanding racial wealth and opportunity gap. Our objective is to increase the percentage of local hires and wages for construction and end-use jobs, to create safe, mixed-income housing, and to enhance existing training programs to put Erieites to work. We know from studying development around the country that when implemented, CBAs contribute to the decline of unemployment and therefore poverty and crime. Implementing CBAs expands the workforce with trained and skilled workers. We know that every party involved wants to see Erie's revitalization efforts succeed. We only ask that the prioritization of communities and community people. We hope you will join us at this table so that citizens can see your good faith in lifting up all residents. Elspeth Kaylee, Erie County United, Member of the Erie Coalition." I have here the letters, so, and thank you for your time.
Are there any more citizens to be heard?
Good morning, council.
Morning.
Um, I have a few issues. One is about the, uh, snow removal. They got plows now that they be going along, you don't clinch your walk off, and they come back and throw more snow on your walk than was there originally. Years ago, I suggested that they would get front-end loaders and haul that snow away. They throw it on the sidewalk, we throw it back on the street, they throw it back over there, you know, when they come back plowing. I don't see what's so hard about getting them front-end loaders. You don't have to have 50 or 60 of them, but you could have something there to remove some of that snow, just like he was saying on the, uh, on the bridge over there. Where's that snow gonna go? When you build it up, on the sidewalk, those kids serve to slide out in the street in front of a car. I know you can't take care of everything, but there are some priorities along the way somewhere. Something should be done about that. I think it was a good idea to have front-end loaders. I see nothing wrong with it. Get rid of the snow, and it won't be, you know, kicked back. It's like, we remove it, truck come along and throw it right back up there. That don't make sense to me. I'd say get some front-end loaders. You don't have to get that many. There are spots that really need to be cleaned, like where those kids, especially when those kids going to school. Kids will be kids, they gonna play anyway, and we as grown-ups, we should understand that, and we should try to make it as safe as we can for our kids. Because if one get hurt or get killed, uh, eh, then you start pointing fingers. That ain't good. I wanna, I have another issue here. I've been going around these jobs. I don't see no black faces on them jobs. When I was out there working years ago, about, I don't know, about 40 years ago, it was a, we invented hard work, but now that, uh, you got a lot of machinery doing the work and it's not as hard as it used to be, I mean, we had it hard, but it's, it's, construction work is not, it's nothing easy about it, but it's not as hard as it used to be. I think that, uh, there's a, there's a problem there. There's a problem. I've known kids come out of college and go on construction, go do construction work. We have, uh, I belong to 603 down there, and I went down there one day and I asked the BA, I said, uh, "How many peoples of color do you have down here?" "I don't know." That was just being smart. He knew. He knew. He's a racist. He is a racist. I'll tell him to his face, whatever, wherever it go, we just go there. But I'm telling you the truth. He's a racist. He shouldn't even be the BA. I was now, I was in the union, I'm retired now, but I was in the union, and, uh, when he got to be BA, I don't know if any of the peoples of color got a job. So he was just, he was telling us what he was going to do. We don't need nothing like that. We need something to get the races together, not divide them. And peoples of color have as many bills or not more than just as anybody else. We should always get an opportunity to work. Everybody should get an opportunity to work. Thank you for your time.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? Are there any more citizens to be heard? Last call for citizens to be heard. That takes us into ordinances for fun.
Council File 15645, Official Ordinance Number 342018. An ordinance appropriating a sum of $148,141 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, PCCD gun violence reduction grant. By Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15645, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 342018, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council passed Official File Ordinance Number 342018, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File 15646, Official Ordinance Number 352018. An ordinance amending subsection 145.07G of the codified ordinances, Article 145 Officers' and Employees' Retirement System by changing the enrollment period to enter the Diverged Retirement Option Plan to any day of the year for the employee for a term of no more than three years. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Murzky, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15646, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 352018, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council passed Official File Ordinance Number 352018, finally by a seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File 15647. An ordinance amending Article 1503.2111 Uniform Construction Code to adopt and incorporate by reference the International Fire Code for 2015. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Murzky, the Council File Ordinance Number 15647, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Ms. Kwiatowski, Ms. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15647 by a seven, nay zero, Council Files 15648. An ordinance amending Article 1503.2112 Uniform Construction Code to adopt and incorporate by reference the International Property Maintenance Code 2015 and replace the first sentence of section 1503, 21A, 12A to read "Add to Section 107.3." By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Murzky, the Council File Ordinance Number 15648, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15648 by a seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File 15649. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $275,067.90 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of 2016 GLG 002 Green Light Go Program signal upgrade East Lake Road and Bacon Avenue. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the Council File Number 15649, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15649 by a seven, nay zero, Council File 15650. An ordinance to establish a quality-of-life ticketing program and establishing fines for violations.
Madam President, can we speak about this on the first, an ordinance for first reading? Okay, I'm going to vote in favor of this. I just wanted to, um, kind of talk a little bit about somebody who called me yesterday, and I think she might have called some other council people, concerned with some of the same things that people, citizens have mentioned when they've come to the podium about how this will be enforced. I think the key, first of all, I want to make it clear that neighborhood organizations have come to council and they support quality-of-life ticketing. I think it's going to be key to make sure that we have good training of our code enforcement officers, good communication with people about what this ordinance does and what differences there it will bring compared to the existing ordinance on code violations. We have to make sure that there's good enforcement and good follow-up, and I think the training and communication are key. I think there's some misunderstanding out there that this is adding new burdens to homeowners and businesses, whereas most of the items in the ordinance are already a code violation. Really what this is, is, has been put together to make sure that code violations are taken care of. So I have confidence that with, you know, the Planning Department and with code enforcement and the administration, that this will be executed well when it's, when it's passed. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Madam President, I stand in support of this, I'm sponsoring it because, um, to reiterate what Mrs. Allen said, what's happened in this community, pardon me, over the course of, you know, the last, you know, maybe decade or so, is that code enforcement issues have not been addressed in a timely manner. Part of that has been the city's responsibility because we've converted to a reactive complaint-driven office versus a proactive office. It's been one of my biggest complaints about code enforcement. I would hate if our police department ran strictly on complaints, if they saw a crime happening, but they did nothing until someone called it in. We would all be up in arms. So, um, the other half of that was the enforcement of our codes, and the way the process was set up is that, you know, you issued a citation, and they had their order to correct, and if they didn't, then, you know, by the time it got to the district justice level, we're talking months, two, three months before a code would be even addressed. So in the, while the grass is growing, it was already high when it was called in as a complaint. It's now, uh, you know, knee-high by the Fourth of July, like the corn, and, uh, people have to live with that. And the problem is not so much just that, but also the nuisance it attracts, the rodents, the rats, the critters, that type of thing. What this does is not change any of our codes in terms of what is enforceable. What it changes is the mechanism by which we enforce our codes, and it allows us to give a quicker response to the citizens so that the issue is dealt with immediately versus a system that was designed for people who wanted to comply. And that's what our old system was. Our system was designed for people who are good citizens. Unfortunately, we have some people who are not honoring the social contract of taking care of your neighbors and taking care of your neighborhood, and so we have to change with the times, and so that's what this does. It's been effective in other cities across Pennsylvania, and that's why I support it.
Is there anybody else?
Madam President, I'm, I'm voting no, but I understand the whole theory behind it. It's just addressing it as citywide, our city is so big, and I just want it to be fair. I'm probably going to be ticketed with the snow removal thing, and if I, I don't want to vote on something that I myself am going to be negligent on just because I can't keep up with the snowplows on my sidewalk. Thank you.
Madam President, just very brief. What we had to do, and I appreciate Bob for bringing this before council, it's something that's been in need for a while, and although everybody may not agree how it's officially put forward in this ordinance, we got to start somewhere. We need to get a little bit of change from the status quo, oh, that guy hasn't mowed his lawn for six weeks, what else is new type deal? But what people have to realize, once again, we got to start somewhere, and then down the road, we'll see how it works for six months, a year. This can be tweaked or changed a little bit to help address whatever concerns may be out there after this ordinance is put in place. Thank you.
Going back a few years, Bob and I were witness to the old system, where we finally convinced citizens to go to the DJ's office, swear out a complaint with the concurrence of the code enforcement when they went along with it. But many times, that didn't work out well for anybody, and the problem still existed. I had a lady text me last night, well, called me during dinner, and we talked for about a half an hour, and somewhat she got the impression like we were passing 41 new ordinances. And she had heard it on a talk show, she said. I said, "Well, that's not really the case. What we're doing is putting teeth into the existing ordinances." Because what happens now, like Bob said, you get cited for tall grass, by the time it goes through the process... By the time it goes through the process, you won't have to worry about it because the snow's there. And we have other issues. I want to applaud the administration for taking care of the problem with the large item pickup. That's always been a problem when the college kids left campus and our, and our pickup was already done. So there's a lot of issues out there. And, you know, we have to start looking at the people that make this community, what is, and that's the homeowners. We have to start thinking, how do we keep them happy? How do we keep them here? How do we get new people moving here? And I think this is another tool in the toolbox. I can remember a few years back, John Reddinger was there as, on the BPRC committee, and they were debating this. And I said, "Well, quit debating it and, you know, just contact the president and put it on the agenda." At the time, Councilman Jones and I had been to the PML convention and heard about what other communities did. So this is long overdue, and I think, as other council members have said, we can always tweak this, but I think what would, what would really help would be a nice rollout with the media where the administration and code enforcement get together and tell the public just what is expected of them. And not a Facebook thing. I want to think like, you know, have a couple dialogues on, on the news or something like that. Just explain to people what is expected of them and what, what the ordinance does do. I think that will help to assage a lot of their worries. Thank you.
Rose, could you call for the vote?
By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the council file ordinance number fifteen six fifty, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff?
No.
Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number fifteen six fifty by a six, nays one, on first reading. That'll take us into new business.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Second.
Any separations?
Madam President, just let the public know that number eight has been pulled off the agenda at this point.
All right, moving the balance of the agenda, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. That will take us to committee reports, Madam President.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Mersky.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few things to report from the Convention Center Authority. Work continues on UPMC Park renovations, including the field. And I did get information from Ms. Tepfer about the blocking of the sidewalk, and I have a call into Casey Wells from the Convention Center Authority to address that issue for people with disabilities. Also, from the zoo, the JMC Ice Arena work has started on renovations there. Thank you to, for the grant from, the R cap from the state. That work continues. And Zubu begins October eighteenth through the thirtieth from six to nine P.M. for the young people. And they have daytime hours on October twentieth and October twenty-seventh where they will start at two P.M. and run through nine P.M. on October twentieth and twenty-seventh. I have taken, my wife and I have taken our son there, and it's always a, a good time, and it's a safe, fun environment, and it's not too scary. The kid was two years old and he survived. So go out there and enjoy the zoo. They decorate it fabulously, and all the proceeds benefit the Erie Zoo. Thank you.
Excuse me, we already had citizens to be heard. Now we're doing reports. So you have to come at the beginning of, I mean, you can give the information to our clerks through the door there, and we'll take a look at it. Right here, over here.
You're welcome. Liz, continue.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Jasmine Burns is here. She came to the caucus, I think, two weeks ago or four weeks ago, I can't remember, but she has offered to do a demonstration for city council on the city grows process, which is updating the citizen complaint process. So I'll talk to council members and see if we can find a time where we can all learn how that process is being digitized and made better because of city grows. I wanted to let the citizens know that we have a study session tomorrow night on the sewer authorities' proposed capital projects. The presentation should be about thirty to forty minutes with time for the public to ask questions. This is a big project, and I hope citizens will attend to learn more about the reasons for the projects, the bonds that will be floated and the costs, the eventual cost to ratepayers. I did put together an agenda, so there'll be copies of the agenda tomorrow night. That's at five-thirty in city council chambers. I have been speaking with a member of Coatesville City Council. Coatesville is a municipality outside of Philadelphia, which actually has a lot of financial problems. And I met people from Coatesville when Kathy Schoff and I went to the training sponsored by the Pennsylvania Municipal League for Newly Elected Officials. And it was just kind of a fluke. She called me to tell me that they have been having problems with their rental inspection program, and they use the same contracted inspectors that the city of Erie uses. So we are going to stay in touch and compare notes and find out what we can learn from each other. I've also asked the city solicitor, this is sort of code-related, I've asked the city solicitor to explain, explore some possible solutions to neighbor complaints about an extremely noisy generator on Emory Drive. It's, it's kind of a dilemma. I've been up there, and the generator is really, really noisy, but I don't know that we can look at it as a specific complain, or maybe we have to look at that a little bit more globally to see if there are other noise issues in Erie. The Pennsylvania chapter of the American Planning Association is going to be having its annual conference in Erie. Not this coming weekend, but I think it's October fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth. And I will be able to attend some of those sessions. And I wanted to assure Freda that there'll be a lot of planners there. I had talked to a friend of mine who is a retired planner from Wisconsin, not from Pennsylvania, and he had given me some advice about how to deal with the alternative lawn situation. I'm sure that that's not unique to Erie. So I think we'll, we'll be able to come up, just maybe by some networking, coming up with some ideas to address your, your concerns. It's not just Freda's concern, there's other people. When I do a lot of walks and riding my bike, I do notice a lot of lawns where people are trying to be environmentally conscious and, you know, grow alternative things, which are not weeds. So, on the other hand, I also know that overgrown lots do immediately signal to people that blight is there and encroaching. Thank you.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Madam President. The Erie Housing Authority is doing quite well under the directions of Mr. Mike Fraley. He has a very good board. They work very hard. They just partner with the new program with Edner on their facilities on Buffalo Road. They're doing a fine job, and they're constantly upgrading their property. Also, I guess I'm concerned, like most of us, on this parking and blocking your driveway. That's interesting, because I block my driveway all the time. When you're cleaning your garage out and you just back your car out and you, you block it. So now I guess I'll get a ticket if officer or parking come by. I think we ought to take a look at that. We need to revisit probably quite a few of our laws on our books. Example would be when Ruby Jenkins' husband was on council. She went back in the books and found that the law on hitching your horses to a pole, you had to hitch it a proper way. And that was on the books when she was on council, and that was a law. Well, we don't have horses downtown and wagons to hitch. So we probably have a lot of laws on the books that need to be removed. But this is one we need to visit and make some adjustments, either get it off the books completely, or try to find out why it was put on the books. I'm sure there was a reason, but we need to find that out. And I know Councilman Kwiatowski is going to check with the parking authority on that. It's very interesting. Thank you, Madam President.
Good morning, once again, everyone. Very brief, back to the parking. Actually, I've had some other calls myself, two from one individual itself, Kaz, that I'm going to pass along to you to check into. It just seems like some people are getting ticketed for something that we wouldn't even think they should, while others may not be. And that may be parking on the front lawn that I see enough of that, I don't know if those are officially getting ticketed or not, but the one with the driveway, I mean, the neighbor could be having a gathering, we could be having a gathering, and you need an extra parking spot. I would have never, ever would imagine that that was not legal in our city. But I'm sure you'll follow up with that. I'll give you the name of the other gentleman that has had not more than a couple occasions with the parking authority. And if there's an issue that we're starting to get there, we'd like to correct it sooner than later. Just so everybody knows, on the EMTA, the reason we pulled the appointments off the agenda today was not, nothing whatsoever against any of the appointments that the mayor had chosen. It's just a matter of getting more legal opinion or advice because there's still one to two board directors out there that have not officially resigned. And before we go and put five more appointments on there, if there's already two, we are dealing with state monies, federal monies. All we want to do as a council, as a board, is get as much information, get it right to know exactly what we're voting on, so we're doing it legality-wise. Once again, nothing, yes, there's a little bit of turmoil there, things need to happen, but we've gone this far a little bit, let's just try to do it right, and hopefully by our next meeting, we'll have this figured out. Administration will have it figured out, and our council members will be at ease on what we're voting on. Thank you.
Kathy?
Madam President, I'm going to pass. Thank you.
Why? Come on.
I'll yield my time to you. Yes, Jim and the other members of council, when I meet with the authority, the parking authority next week, I'll bring up the concerns about the phone apps, the blocking of sidewalk ordinance, and other matters. I think the best thing to do would be to, maybe I'll request Mr. Massing to come in there. There's too many questions and things going on about enforcement and how it's, how it's being done equally. I mean, there are rules, and I understand that, like parking on your lawn, but blocking your own driveway has never been an issue unless somebody complained, although it's always been on the books. I remember my dad warning me, and he was a police officer. You cannot block your own driveway. Right or wrong, that's the rule, and that's, probably has to do with equality as the Pennsylvania Constitution looks at. But I was embarrassed to see on the news about Warful Avenue, here we are debating about some woman getting a parking ticket, blocking her driveway when we have a car parked for a year on Warful Avenue. And the media, to my knowledge, hasn't got an answer yet. So as a councilman, I'm asking you, what the hell happened that a car is parked for one year? If it's a matter of national security or local security, please tell us. But nobody should have to wait a whole year to get a car towed. The airport authority, I had the pleasure of meeting with them. To make it, I want to thank the members of council that signed the letter of support along with county council. What we found out at that meeting was that the dog was not certified. How that happened, nobody knows. But once again, we have an example of the director and that meeting was bored and keeping his board up to date. So as a result of that, Councilwoman Fatique and I will be meeting with the airport director in the near future. We have the date set up, and we're going to find out just what the heck is going on there and how we can help them. Tended to study session on panhandling, and that was very interesting. I do have one complaint. It was brought to my attention that the 2017 CAFRA, and for those that don't know what that is, that's the financial situation of the city. A very important document is on the internet, but no member of council, nor do I understand the city controller, who is supposed to get a copy of the report, has a physical copy of one. No councilperson, and definitely not the controller, should have to look on the internet for a document, just, just like the budget should be delivered to us in a paper quality, a paper product if we desire it. We weren't even notified until my, I don't know if you were, Bob, that the CAFRA is even out. I don't know what's going on, but this has to stop. Council needs to be made aware. That's a very important document. That's not the budget, that's the financial status of the city. So I expect to see those copies either made or in my possession and my fellow councilmen and women. And finally, I got to make a comment on the EMTA. I didn't want to, but I received a lot of phone calls. It seems strange that for an administration that was stressing transparency since day one, that there was lack of it. City council was provided with little or no information, at least this councilman. My fellow colleagues on county council that I contacted relayed the same problem to me. The first notification I had of the board members or the qualifications was on September twenty-seventh, a full seventy-two hours after it was announced publicly. Why council as an equal partner can't be notified in advance is beyond me. I have served under three mayors, some had overkill on press releases, some were a little bit not so liberal, but we get nothing out of this one. All boards are made with the concurrence of council, yet we had to wait three days to find out who they were? It was reported that there were disagreements and a lack of direction. So my question is, whose direction? And if disagreements are a real cause for disbanding boards, my God, history is loaded with examples. The decision at D-Day, the Cuban Missile Crisis, heck, even the ratification and the creation of our Declaration of Independence and Constitution were subject to debate. And, you know, the whole purpose of why we created autonomous boards was to, was to keep politics out of decision-making. And to disband them is a very dangerous precedent. We need some dialogue. We're all in this together. And as I said, these boards are created way back for good reasons. I remember why some of them were created. I served on one for a number of years as a young man, as, as an employee. So it's just, it's just upsetting. And I think democracy is a fragile thing, and when we start bypassing the council and the administration form of government, we're in the council and the administration form of government, we're in dangerous ground. We have seen in the past what happens when mayors and executives reshape boards to fit their image. It never turns out right. A person like Miss Minnick there, I admire her. She should have never been asked to step down if she did nothing wrong. That's my two cents, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
I have no report. Renee?
I just have three or four quick things. I wanted to alert everybody that today is Coffee with a Cop at Amber and Forge from eleven AM to seven PM. We're going to have officers there throughout the day, and community members can just go and have coffee with the cop and get to know them on a personal level. It's part of our community policing initiative. It's actually a national event that we've signed on to this year. Second thing is regarding the parking authority, they are working out glitches, you can still use quarters in the meters. I think part of the issue with the increase in parking fines is to pay for the kiosk system that is going in, in front of the courthouse, and to try that. But I want to say that Christopher Friday, who really has been spearheading the effort to make the parking situation a little bit easier for people, including online paying of tickets, is working with people. There have been glitches, but if there is a situation where you get a ticket and you weren't supposed to get a ticket, they are waiving those, so, you know, whenever you engage in a new system like this, there are going to be issues that come up. They are trying to correct those and get those right, and the best way is to work with them, to help them perfect the system. On the quality of life ticketing, we will be doing, training on that. We will also be communicating with the community, with residents, and in fact, we are in the process of developing a pamphlet that will be given to residents that explains the process, that explains, you know, some of the different things that code enforcement officers will be looking forward, will be looking at. But I did want to just reiterate that these are not new violations, these are existing violations that are already on the books. It just gives us a new way to tackle some of them, and some of the council members mentioned, some of the issues that we have throughout the summer are high grass, we, you know, weeds and trash, and that was part of the reason why we extended the bulky item pickup, the large item pickup, to continue throughout the year, because our code enforcement officers are inundated with questions relating to grass and trash and weeds, and they can't, that hinders them from being able to focus on the larger issues related to blight. And so we're really trying to help mitigate those issues so that we can focus on the larger issues. On the EMTA, I'll just, I will just say that we tried to be as transparent as possible. We put it out there, it was a public process, we took applications. We, you know, after talking to everybody that was involved in the situation, we found that it was an intractable situation and that politics was playing into what was going on with the board, and we thought it was necessary to have a fresh start. And in terms of, you know, the one or two board members, there is a dispute, I guess, over whether or not they officially resigned. We've been told by the EMTA solicitor that they did, and that there was also a verbal resignation. All of the EMTA board members that were sitting on the former board were invited to reapply if they wanted to, to submit resumes and cover letters explaining why they would like to serve on the board, and none did by the date that was set. So again, we just wanted a fresh start, we wanted to make sure that we had people serving in the roles that could take the board into the future and focus not on past issues, but on the future. So that's all I have.
Ed?
I actually have one brief thing, since we talked about parking. Chapter five, section five two one, point oh one, A two A.
Five times.
Yeah, five twenty-one, A two A. It says you cannot park, stand or park a vehicle in front of a public or private driveway. Just so we're clear, that means it's on the road. You're allowed to park in your driveway, it's just parking would be on the roadway. On street parking, you can't park there. I assume, I mean, could you change it? You have the power to change it. You would need to be careful that if you allow someone to block their own driveway, we better clearly define what's their own, and I think the concept of why it's there is most likely public safety with trying to get emergency vehicles there. That being said, I can park in my driveway at the very back end, so Mr. Witherspoon, you're concerned of backing up to clean out your garage, you could do that. Does that really kind of block the driveway? Yes.
You can't block the sidewalk, though.
But you can't block the sidewalk and you can't park on the roadway.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I think a lot of this, Mr. Betz, also goes back to, and my mother has a situation like this, where we have shared driveways, and if you get both parties in a situation where the one feels like, you know, they can park there all day, I think that's why council did this many years ago.
That's a typical provision that you see in many municipal ordinances, but Mr. Kretowski, what you're touching on is exactly why I said, if you're going to change it, make sure you clearly define what is your own private driveway.
Excuse me, but I cannot park because I live out of T, so when I park at the end of my driveway, the people coming up can't turn.
Okay.
Can I ask one last question? I just wanted to, well, I don't even know if this is a question, but kind of going back to the EMTA on the Citizen Advisory Board, I wasn't aware that they were still meeting, because when I looked on the EMTA website, the last agenda and the last minutes from the Citizen Advisory Committee were from 2015, and that was, so if they're still meeting, that's great. I just don't know why there have been no updated meetings, agenda, or minutes since 2018, and I also thought maybe the administration should clarify that you aren't about to get rid of that advisory committee, if anything, I think you wanted to reconstitute it.
Yeah, we wanted to revitalize it and reconstitute it and make sure that there was a lot of rider input, so I don't know where that whole thing came out that it was planning on being disbanded.
Thanks, Renee.
That was the first I heard of it being disbanded, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that adjourns our council meeting.
City council adjourns at ten forty-two. Arrington, Mrs. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Okay.
Yeah.